Segundo, we are calling to order the special meeting of the El Segundo City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nicol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Brand.
President.
Mayor Pro Tempersack.
Here.
And Mayor Boyes.
Here. Now is the time and place for public communications.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Neil Cadman, and I am a resident and also owner of Cadman Group, Commercial Property Management Company here in town, and also manage Park Vista for you guys. I'm here this morning both as a commercial property management company and as a landlord of apartment buildings, but also a tenants' rights advocate. I'm not here to debate the merits of AB 1482, the pros and cons of rent control, but I'm here to give you some information as to what 1482 is and how it applies to the city of El Segundo. The law takes effect on January 1, 2020. It enacts a 5% rent increase per 12-month period, plus a CPI. And that CPI is based on the April 1 CPI change of the previous year, each year. The example is that this year's maximum rent increase is 5% plus a CPI of 3.3%. So this year's allowable rent increase in the state of California, who are going to be enacting 1482, is 8.3%. It's a pretty hefty rent raise. In one month period, a landlord can raise the rent twice. Each rent increase total must not exceed the CPI plus the 5% of increase. The law does not apply to single-family homes or individual condos that are not owned by a corporation or REIT. Duplexes do fall under 1482, as long as the owner of the duplex does not live in one of the units. The law does not apply to buildings 15 years old or younger. This is a rolling 15-year law. It means that a building built 15 years ago in 2019 does not fall under AB 1482. However, in 2020, it will. The law applies to the whole state. Cities with their own rent control, keeping their own programs unless the rent restrictions are higher than 1482. An example: We own many properties in Long Beach. Long Beach enacted its own rent control. On August 1, 2019, Long Beach enacted a 10% maximum rent increase. 1482 is 5% plus CPI. Therefore, Long Beach's rent control is already voided. Another example is Los Angeles RSO, the old rent stabilization ordinance, that averages about 2% to 3% increase per year on buildings built before 1978. Since that is more restrictive than 5% plus CPI, in those buildings, AB 1482 will not take effect. Does 1482 impact me and my operations, my clients' operations? No, it actually doesn't really. An 8.3% rent increase is pretty dramatically high, and any landlord who was not ready for 1482 to take effect either has had his or her head in the sand for the past year or bought their building within the last 12 months and was counting on dramatic increases in rents in order to make their investment work. Why is this issue in front of you today? Because of what is called the no-fault eviction. No longer will a landlord be able to terminate a tenancy on a month-to-month tenant with a 30- or 60-day notice. Landlords would use notices to quit to primarily get rid of tenants, problem tenants, in buildings. We own and manage 1,200 apartment units in Southern California. I have never used a notice to quit to get rid of a tenant who had low rent. I've only used notices to quits on month-to-month tenants when they provide problems to the building. Now, the last day to have filed a notice to quit according to 1482 is on a 30-day notice was November 30, 2019, or on tenants who required 60-day notices was October 31, 2019. The difference is, is that people who lived in an apartment building of 12 months or less could get a 30-day notice to quit. People living in an apartment 12 months or more had to receive 60-day notices. So, the no-fault provision means a landlord will be legally allowed to terminate a tenant only if a tenant materially breaches a contract: not paying the rent, committing a crime at the premises, moving in unauthorized occupants, et cetera. There is a loophole, and that loophole is that AB 1482 takes effect on January 1, 2020, which means that many landlords in California have issued 30- or 60-day notices to many tenants across the state. Many of those landlords have done it because of tenants with low rent, and they have been attempting to get rid of those tenants in order to get higher rent. Because one of the key provisions of 1482 is that when a vacated unit comes to market, market rent is charged. There is not something called vacancy control, which is the old Santa Monica model, where the new tenant paid what the old tenant was paying. If you take action like other cities, you will halt the legal process, determine a tenancies before 1482 takes effect. The issue here is that if a landlord is attempting to get rid of a tenant based on 1482 because of low rent, perhaps those tenants should be protected. As a landlord, I'm actually stating that. However, there is another side to this story, and that is that out of 1,200 apartment units, we issued two 60-day notices based on 1482. Both of those were in Lawndale, and both of those were tenants that had continually given us problems. And so we decided that we needed to get rid of those tenants on 60-day notices prior to 1482 coming in. There is one more loophole in 1482, and that is that starting January 1, 2020, landlords will no longer be giving tenants one-year leases. We have eliminated the one-year lease from our company. Reason being is because tenants who are on month-to-month agreements can still be terminated with 30- or 60-day notices within the first 12 months of their tenancy. There are many cities that are considering two types of actions right now. First, to protect tenants that are under 30- or 60-day notices right now, prior to 1482 taking effect. And also, many cities are considering action to eliminate the ability of a landlord to have a month-to-month agreement and will require 12-month leases in order to protect people from the provisions of AB 1482 and that loophole to eliminate tenants in the first year. So there are many cities around you that are taking action on this right now. Culver City is also considering a 3% rent increase in addition to immediate tenant protection from 1482. Hawthorne is considering it. Beverly Hills has already done it. Glendale has already done it. Burbank has done it, and so it is a consideration. My suggestion to you, though, is that if you take this action, that you look at the fact that there is another side to this story, that every landlord may not be terminating someone on a 30- or 60-day notice just because of low rent. They actually may have another story that is beneficial to the entire building and their operation. So, thank you for your time and look forward to your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Cadman. Any other public comments?
Thank you again. So, thank you, Neil Cadman, for that. I was taking notes as well.
Steph, can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Stephanie Sosa. So I was taking notes as well. I think some of that stuff I had researched, but some of it was new to me, so I think it is very important to know. You know, and it's a hard situation, because I do understand that if there are tenants that this was a good opportunity to get them out, because they've been problems. I feel for all the people I've talked to, that has not been the situation. But of course, obviously, I haven't talked to everybody in El Segundo. But I do feel like there are a lot of people that are being hurt negatively right now and being kicked out, because a lot of them aren't even the same landlords. So I think that's one thing to be clear. It's not the same landlords that they have a history with that are now kicking them out. For a lot of these, these are new companies coming in, purchasing the buildings, kicking out the people to try to make a profit. So I think there's something important there. I know for me and my husband alone, we have a 10-year rental history in El Segundo, as well as other locations around South Bay, where we've always paid our rent on time. We have excellent credit. So we're excellent tenants. We're just being kicked out because this other company came in to try to make a profit. Yesterday, I talked to a disabled Navy veteran. He's nearing retirement. He's been in El Segundo for 21 years. And he said that it's very difficult to have, you know, 60 days to move out everything that you've accumulated in 21 years. You know, and for them, they got a new company that came in saying they were looking for a long, trusting, professional relationship, asked for the rent. After they paid the rent, issued the 60-day notices to get them out. So, you know, this is going on. As I believe, what I understood from Neil Cadman, what he said, is that this wouldn't impact. Because I know something that Chris Pimentel brought up last time is, of course, not wanting to affect mom-and-pop real estate. But I mean, this doesn't seem like it would affect them. It seems like it would impact more of the big corporations, from my understanding. And again, as I mentioned last time, there are elderly people, there are disabled people, there are people that cannot afford to move at this time, especially around the holidays, that are being negatively impacted right now. Also, I know I gave you all the templates, the hard copies, last time, and I gave them to Chris, sorry, Scott McN, as well, sorry, on Monday. And just so you know, those were put together by a lawyer, who her whole background in law is tenant law. And those are the same templates, exact same templates, that were used in 35 cities that passed it. And those laws would protect anybody right now with a 30-day, 60-day notice, or anybody that is going through the eviction process, where a judge has not already ruled that they are evicted. So all the people we talked about last time would be saved. If a month-to-month goes into place in January, I do feel that would help. I do feel like that would help all of those people, all of those landlords, that do have problem tenants. So if a year lease doesn't go into place in January, and it is month-to-month, I feel for any problem tenants, the landlord still has a power to give them 30 days to get them out. So I'm hoping that that also takes care of... Sorry, I'm so distracted.
Yeah, gentlemen, can you... She's having a hard time concentrating. Thank you. We're going to give you additional time. Just take your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So, and again, I think, you know, for the city of Los Angeles to pass it, we talked about Hermosa Beach passing, Redondo Beach, Long Beach, all of these other cities. I don't think that they did this naively, not knowing that it wasn't going to hold any water in court. And there are tenants that have been good tenants, that can prove that they were good tenants, that were affected by this, that have already gone to court, and their cases have been dismissed based on this ordinance being passed. So just so you know, this is not a delaying of the inevitable. This is not just putting something off that's going to harm tenants anyways. This is protecting tenants. Cases have already been dismissed. Cases will continue to be dismissed based on this ordinance. So just, I want you to know that there is a lot of power in whatever you decide. And also, finally, for those tenants that have left El Segundo, because I've talked to a few of them, that are really upset, and also like Chris Pimentel said, I know you all have worked really hard to have El Segundo be in a good place. I saw it the first day I got here, when I saw mothers, you know, I saw single women jogging at night, and I thought, where am I? Like, this is so weird. But it's so safe here. It's so nice. And at Christmas time, I was here when Santa Claus came down the street, and I just, I told my husband, I was like, oh my God, this place is amazing. There is something really special about El Segundo, and I don't see it as my right to be here. I do see it as a privilege, and I'm very happy for the time I've been here. With that said, for everybody that's been evicted and has already left, people are still watching. And like any good customer, people can come back to El Segundo. People are still talking about El Segundo. So I do feel what you decide will send a very strong message if El Segundo, if the city councils defend the residents and if they stand by the residents. And I think that will spread and send a very powerful message to everybody watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sosa. Okay, we're going to close public communication. Council comments?
Who wants to start? No? Does council want me to explain first?
Yeah, if there's no council comments related to the public communications, go into the presentation. But I have a question for you, Mark. One thing is, related to Mr. Cadman, one thing we hadn't heard, unless I missed it, was about the 12-month change. There's no longer a 12-month lease that's enforceable. Can you explain that?
Yeah, it's a little more complicated than the, but he's generally... That's correct. Now, what that means is, if the city wanted to get into that, then we would, the city would be then entering into the realm of permanent rent control. That is, this idea where, and he explained it generally, where a city can have rent control, it can't be less restrictive than what the state law is. It can be more restrictive, because otherwise, the state law will overtake it. So with regard to that, which is a kind of a future issue, not too far off in the future. So some cities are looking at, that may be their first foray into rent control, is that issue. Is addressing in their cities whether they're going to do that or not, which is not the current issues that most cities are addressing through these urgency ordinances, because those aren't the issues that are causing the problems that tenants are having today.
Does this, and I know it's a bit of a tangent on this element, but are we in effect looking at a period where every lease becomes a de facto 11-month lease? Because they'll get a notice to quit, so just to make sure they don't get over the one-year bar, and they can always have a 30- or 60-day notice period?
Well, I would think that, well, I would think that would be probably not. And again, this is probably a better question for a real estate professional than the city attorney, but I don't think that landlords are going to want to be in the business of kicking out tenants every 11 months. And if Sacramento is consistent with how they've been operating the last few years, just like the accessory dwelling unit bills, where they said, okay, we just want to do this little thing, and now it's a big thing, I suspect that this is not going to be the end of what we're going to see on rent control. That this is a, we're going to get your feet wet with this, and then maybe next year or the year after, we're going to plunge you in, and maybe they'll take the city of LA or Santa Monica, and they'll, which are much more restrictive than what is currently on the table from the state. Wouldn't surprise me if they don't come back with that, which then gets us into some of the issue that we have with the AD legislation, is we jump in and we try to regulate, and then while we're doing that, Sacramento changes the rules again, so we have to change our ordinance again. That's gone on three times now. I could see the same thing happening here with the cities that try to get into rent control in reaction to all of this, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, but you may be chasing this and trying to stay up with what Sacramento is doing. It's complicated. So that part of it, yes, he's generally, he summarized that well, but that's an issue that I think cities are looking at for the future. Now, with regard to the statements that all the 35 cities, and I don't know if that's the exact right number or not, have adopted all the same ordinances, urgency ordinances. the exact right number or not, have adopted all the same ordinances, urgency ordinances, that's not correct. They vary from cities, I'll say just on a wholesale basis, taking what the state law is, which is the rent caps and the eviction issues, and, and bringing those forward on an urgency basis, to some cities just dealing with the eviction process and this no-fault and for-cause issue. And then some cities just dealing with the evictions and the, and limiting it to no evictions other than for-cause until January 1, which is what I have presented to you. And the reason for that is that if the city tries to, and this is where I think it gets difficult for a city legally, if the city tries to put in rent control caps on an urgency basis, then that's gonna raise questions about us having an administrative process and whatnot to enforce all of that. And it puts us in the middle of, of rent control. The approach that many of the cities have taken is on this, on a prospective basis, that there will be no evictions except for cause, which means non-payment of rent, committing waste to the structure, those kind of things. And they've limited it to allowing the people that are evicted to raise it in an eviction process before the court. This can be a defense for you. And they're clearly not making it a criminal offense under the municipal code, and they're wording it such that the city won't get enmeshed in the battle between the landlord and their tenant. They're just saying, we're gonna provide this small area of protection for tenants on a go-forward basis where there's not for-cause reason to evict. And what they're essentially doing, and what I've proposed, is to take out this no-fault section, which again, would put the city in the middle of a process of, the no-fault is you're moving family members in, you're going to do substantial renovations, all of those things, which would in January require, you could still do those things if you met the requirements, but you have to pay the one-months rent. I'm not certain how Sacramento's going to implement all that yet, but I've, I have provided the more conservative ordinance from the city's perspective of keeping the city out of the middle of these disputes. Now, Mr. Katman did a really excellent job of explaining 1482 and some of the issues, and so I, I'm just checking off my notes of things I don't need to talk about again. Again, this is only perspective that's being proposed. It doesn't apply to single-family residences or condominiums that are owned personally. The remedy is, is again, just a defense in a unlawful detainer eviction process, and there would be no criminal violations from violation of this code if it were adopted. There's been issues about bringing, whether this should be retroactive or not. See, Amanda and I've had a lot of discussions about this, good, healthy discussions. I don't believe that a court's gonna find those to be enforceable if it were to go to, now, I'm not gonna say there's not, here's, the way I generally view things is, there's the trial court level, and trial court judges have a way of doing what they want to do. And they'll look at equities and all sorts of things, and sometimes they'll ignore what the appellate courts might do above them because they realize nobody may appeal, that they may have a way of affecting an outcome that a higher court's not gonna necessarily review because most things don't get appealed. I think if this issue of retroactivity were to go up on appeal to a court of appeal, that court's not likely gonna find it's enforceable. And so it causes me concern to recommend something as far as being retroactive that I don't think is enforceable or lawful. And I could see where that would have unintended consequences on the people that might think it protects them. They might fight an unlawful detainer action based upon it. They might lose. They might hurt their credit. They might have a harder time renting another place, thinking that this is going to be an enforceable, retroactive provision. And on the other hand, you may have, and we may get enmeshed in those legal battles if someone feels harmed by that. And also, from a landlord's point of view, they may, they may feel like challenging the city on that, claiming that we're affecting their property rights. This is all happening in a very quick fashion, which is never a good thing as far as trying to predict the law because everything's happening in real time. There are no, there aren't gonna be court of appeal decisions on this thing for a year or two. So no one knows for certain what's gonna happen, but just my, my background in, in looking at retroactivity of, of application of laws, I just don't think it's likely to work on private parties. It's done with governmental agencies where, where the state passes things retroactively on cities, and the courts have been okay with that in many instances, but on private properties, I mean, private parties, that's just not generally the case. So.
Can you, Mark, touch on Mrs. Sosa's comment about the courts have already protected tenants in a couple instances? Do you know that to be true?
I don't know that to be true, which was my explanation upfront, is maybe there's some, well, there are cities that passed these kind of ordinances like months and months ago. And if someone got evicted subsequent, got a notice of eviction subsequent to a city passing an ordinance, yes, I could see that. But I don't see at this point with regard to, other than for the next 26 days, and people that might be evicted during that period, I don't think it's going to help anybody that's been evicted prior to that. Now, is there a court that is a superior court, a trial court? Because these don't get reported. And so there's not a tracking system. You'd have to be tracking virtually every unlawful detainer case occurring in the state, and there are thousands and thousands of them. So is it possible that some trial court someplace has said, yeah, I'll, I'll agree that retroactivity is okay? Yeah, that's possible.
One, one last question. This is for Scott, for me, anyway. Did the outreach, we asked for outreach to landlords. Besides Mr. Katman, have we heard from any landlords in the community yet?
Mr. Katman is here because of that outreach. Yeah, we, certainly, an effort was made to try to make both sides of the issue aware. Yeah, the word was put out.
I know, I know, Mr. Katman, in addition to the 1,200 units, that you are also heavily involved with the Apartment Association, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have one question, just for clarification. Mr. Katman mentioned that duplexes apply to this ordinance. Now, with all these ADUs being built, do these, do they, these houses that now have an ADU become a de facto duplex?
Yeah, on duplexes, so long as an owner is living in one of the units, the AB 1482 won't apply to that situation. As far as the accessory dwelling units, I'll have to look at that, which, you have to look at whether, there, there is a reference in the legislation to the, to the, those accessory dwelling units, but where, again, and this is where I think we'll see more issues coming out of planning and Sacramento is, essentially now, the law allows those to be duplexes. I don't think that if someone came in and wanted to build a duplex on a single-family property, so long as it complied with the ADU laws, I don't think we could prevent that. So if you, it, this is, creates sort of an ambiguity about what an accessory dwelling unit is as opposed to a duplex.
I'd like to ask the DIAS if you guys would allow me to have Mr. Katman come up and ask him a few questions? You guys okay with that? Mr. Katman, are you okay with that?
Okay.
I'll be nice. Thank you for coming back up. Thank you for coming here this morning.
You're welcome.
I often, I often try to put myself in a place when we're asked to make policy. We're not, we're not necessarily making policy for those who are doing the right thing and being good citizens. We're usually trying to make policy to block people that are taking advantage of the loopholes. So I'm not gonna hold you to any of these answers, but I'm just trying to understand, put myself in the place of someone who just bought a property. And what, I'm trying to place this, so I buy a new property today. The rents are fairly low. Before AB 1482, how much could I increase their rents?
Unlimited.
Unlimited?
In El Segundo.
So if it, so in El Segundo, they're on a month-to-month tenancy, and they're paying a thousand bucks a month, and I can say, hey, your rent's going up to 2,000?
Absolutely.
There's no protection?
No protection.
Okay. I'm just trying to, then, can you maybe just kinda guess as to why landlords would feel compelled that they need to evict full buildings prior to this law? Like, why they're rushing to do so?
Well, my belief is that there's, there's essentially two different types of investors in commercial property. There are those who, like myself, who buy for long-term cash flow. We tend to keep buildings maintained. We want tenants to be happy. We want long-term tenants. And then there are investors who buy on what we call for a good rent roll, which means that they buy the building, they turn the building, they get the rents 30% higher on a gross rent multiplier basis or a cap rate, that building by raising rents by $200 on a 15-unit building, I love math, you can increase that bill, that building's value by $300,000 just by raising people's rent 30 bucks a month. So that's the game that people have come into this town and bought buildings at these inordinately low cap rates, 2.5%, 3% cap rates, on things that I wouldn't touch because I don't see the value in it, without completely turning the building and making every unit vacant, putting $20,000 into every unit, upgrading them, new appliances, new cabinets, everything, and then getting a quote-unquote market rate.
Okay, so let's, let's refer to that situation as an apartment flipper.
Yeah.
Okay, it's an apartment flipper. So fast forward, a year from now, 1482's in place. What stops that apartment flipper from doing that same thing?
1482 in place, you cannot give a tenant, you cannot evict a tenant unless there is just cause, a direct violation of the lease.
Cannot at all?
Not at all.
Even if you're paying them to leave?
There are provisions in 1482 that if you're gonna do major renovation, but that, I, I don't know if Mark has, has analyzed that, but that is very gray area right now. There are provisions in the city of Los Angeles for doing major rehabilitation, in city of Santa Monica for doing major rehabilitation, but I haven't seen, in the dozens of documents that I reviewed, that there is a provision at the moment for major rehabilitation to be able to turn, to turn units. You can move in family members.
There is a provision about the, whatever the nomenclature, whether it was significant renovations, whatever, in the state law, but it's, as you said, it's, and I said it the other night, it's, it's very, it's written in a very gray way, from my perspective and having read City of LA and others, those are much clearer about what renovations, and in most cases, you can't even get rid of people for renovations. You can pass on costs, but it's very difficult and under the city of LA to get rid of people for renovations. The state law, it's yet to see, be seen really how that's gonna work out.
There also is, I might add to that as well, there also is a provision for relocation cost, so that if you are gonna do some type of relocation, if you're gonna move a family member into a unit, then you have to pay a relocation cost to that tenant that you're displacing. The relocation cost at this moment, the way that I read 1482, is one month's worth of rent.
Now, there's nothing in this, and Mark, this, listen to this question, too. Like, in city of LA, I could buy a dilapidated building that has had tenants in there forever at super-low rents, and I can offer each one of them $10,000 to leave. And they, they can by choice, accept my money and go.
Depending on the year-built date. And the city of Los Angeles' building's built before 1978, that that would apply.
Yeah, you, yes, you can. They have a, they have a program actually called Cash for Keys, where you can offer a tenant to buy them out. You have to go through a process.
Well, there's different categories and different pricing for age and disability and.
Well, that's, there's some people you can't kick out at all.
No, but you can ask them to leave. You could say, hey, I'm willing to give you $20,000 if you're willing to move.
That's true.
There's nothing that stops that tenant from accepting that 20 grand and that landlord from accepting that.
I just realized a question.
You're correct. It's heavily regulated about how it has to be done. It's, it's a dance, if you will, that you have to do precisely, correctly. But yes, you can do that.
And there's nothing in this law, seeing as we have no rent control provision here in El Segundo, there's nothing in AB 1482 that would stop a landlord from doing that or a tenant from accepting, correct?
There's nothing in 1482 or in any rent control provision that would make me go up to one of my fine tenants and say, I would like to have your unit, and I'm gonna give you $50,000 for you to give me a notice to vacate. That's a business decision. And, no, there's nothing that stops you from doing that. What stops you from doing that, if the tenant doesn't want the $50,000 and wants to stay in their home, that tenant is protected.
Got it.
So, so essentially, the issue in front of you is applying the protection that starts on January 1, 2020, to right now. Jump it, jump it so that it takes effect right now.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I have a question as well. I was having coffee with an elderly woman who has a building, and they've had it forever. And I don't think that they're necessarily tuned in to what's going on with the, they're not members of the apartment, AOC or whatever it is. I think that they're catching on to this a little bit later, despite what you said earlier about people shouldn't have their head in the sand. It's like, you have an investment, it's one of many, maybe it's not even that material to your overall portfolio, but it's significant enough. And then you get wind of this, and you've got a last-minute opportunity essentially to reset your building, which you might want to pass on to your heirs, by the way. If not, the heirs are gonna be stuck with this rent control in perpetuity. Right?
Yes, well, no, it's a 10-year, AB, AB 1482 has a 10-year cycle. It sunsets in 10 years.
Is it, what, based on your experience, is that likely to get, man, it's hard to predict 10 years from now? Could be a whole new.
I, I would predict it probably would be extended unless somehow, you know, the market forces made it not desirable. But one of the reasons that they don't, like the city of LA, I think it is 1978, they don't want to do things to discourage new development. They want new apartments built and whatnot, and so they, they backdate these to allow for newer investors to come in and, and want to invest, and also for those that made a more recent investment to recoup their investment. At least, that's my understanding of the intent.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And there was, I think there was one other point that I wanted to make about that, and hopefully it'll come back into my head. But, but to reiterate, I think where you were going, Scott, is, does 1482 or any rent control stop a business agreement between a landlord and a tenant to buy them out, so to speak? No, it doesn't do that at all. We, we have at times encountered problems with tenants to where we have something that I kinda coined about 20 years ago called the rider-truck policy, which is where if I have a tenant that is just completely demoralizing all of my other tenants and creating problems, I have said to them, I will have a rider-truck at 10:00 AM and five crisp $100 bills. Give me the key, and I'll pay you to get out, or else I'm gonna evict you. And so there, there are business dealings. Now, of course, if that tenant didn't want the five crisp $100 bills, they could fight and get an attorney and fight in court. But now, I don't see 1482 as stopping any landlord from making that type of a business decision. It's just a question of how much is the tenant going to, is gonna want in order to move.
Yeah, the root of my question was also from a place of, I always fear institutional money. I don't fear the mom-and-pop landlord. I fear the institutional money coming in. And so, you know, if, if El Segundo, one of the, say, negative byproducts, if you wanna call it that, of this law and what's happening to our tenant base, is that if you take rents that used to be here and you move them here, who that tenant is has now changed. So the makeup of our community could be altered in a sense. And, and so that's, that was more me trying to understand.
Yeah.
Does this law protect us moving forward from this institutional money coming in and, and trying to, say, alter the makeup of our town?
Well, I, I, I see your point, and, and I just wanna make, try and make sort of a 20-second comment on that, which for me usually means 60 seconds, as you all know, is that we're not arguing rent control here. However, there is a theory of rent control that it does not help those it intends to protect. A case in point is that if I have an apartment building, or if a landlord has an apartment building that is a two-bedroom unit, and you have a family situation, can afford the rent, has decent FICO score, has good references, and then you have, the example I use is a neurosurgeon who lives in Santa Barbara, who does surgery two times a week, and would rather have an apartment in town rather than paying for a hotel, who has an 840 FICO score and makes 3/4 of a million dollars a year, and applies for that same apartment because it's rent control? Well, who are we? Well, who are we his landlord's gonna rent to? We're gonna rent to a single person who uses less water, so there are those types of arguments. Uh I can guarantee you, though, that every time the rent control has happened, the demographics of a chan- of a city change. They just do, because they attract people to areas, to states or cities where there is rent stabilization in place. Now, my final point to that statement is, again, keeping in mind that an eight-point-three percent rent increase, I didn't raise anybody's rent eight-point-three percent, that was over-market. I, you see a lot of for-rent signs right now, up a grand, you drop off from middle school, there's a lot of for-rent signs in town now. And that's because a lot of landlords raised rents eight-point-three percent and had people move out. I didn't want the vacancies. Uh it's driving rents over-market, so it's just something to kinda keep in the back of your mind as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counsel discussion?
Uh for the city manager, do we have a sense of how many units are affected in the city?
Uh Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's an excellent question. I've spent the last week and a half trying to get an answer to that question, I don't have it, but they're safe to say there's a fair number out there, um just don't know. I don't know, anecdotally, I can throw out some numbers, but uh but enough for you to have this special meeting.
Uh do you have a, e- even a, is there a way to extrapolate a rough sense, are we talking about twenty, fifty, a hundred? Because it's, if our homeowner base, discounting single-family homes, if our renter base is fifty, almost sixty percent of our units in the city are rentals. But that includes single-family homes. So if we come back from that and say that twenty percent of our population is an apartment dweller, then I I don't know, we're talking about a hundred units that that are affected, does anyone have any sense? I don't know if this is a broader.
It's re- it's really hard and we have to be careful because we don't want.
Yeah, we could be up by an order of magnitude.
Yeah, but you're talking, uh as Mr. Cadman has indicated, anecdotally, he sees more rental signs up a- after this law was passed. The economy's doing really well right now, we heard today, significant growth in nationwide and new jobs, so we're not in a recession. Um so you can, anecdotally, it's it's going to be more than a few dozen, I'm willing to say that. I don't have any empirical evidence, um I'm happy to spend the next month or so trying to get that. Um I don't know if the local um Realtor Association keeps that data. Um but in time, we probably can get that for you, we just don't have it now, I'm sorry for that, but just don't have it.
And I, I think probably like a lot of us have been sort of shaking trees around to try and get grasp data about this from both property owners and renters. Uh I did not get the sense, but there's certainly no, I don't have any quantitative data, that a number of people are offering the sort of you know, bridging, enacting the one-month rent that that would be in effect after January first, where they're telling a lesser, or hey, I need you out, because I have to reset the rent before this goes into effect, but here is a month's rent for your next place. I did not, in my conversations, get a sense that that package was being routinely offered. Uh I don't put that out there as any form of evidence to this, but I I don't know if anyone else on the dais in their conversations had run into anything that that contravenes that. It seemed like people felt um as though they had limited options as a property owner. They had to make a decision, in in many cases, a decision they did not want. Uh but part of that calculus did not involve providing any sort of bridging mechanism for another, uh for for a month's rent or anything of that nature. I did, I guess this is sort of an interrogative to that, anyone else ha- hear anything of about that?
My, in my experience and the people I spoke to, there was two things happening. One were rent increases, as Mr. Cadman mentioned, uh the building that I'm currently renting, while we're remodeling our home. The lady who moved out, she moved out because her rent, her rent went up by five hundred dollars. And she was like, yeah, no, not worth it to me, I'm moving. So she wasn't evicted, but you could say in a sense that a five-hundred-dollar increase per month is a form of an eviction. But then I also feel like we're hearing from people who weren't even given the option to pay more money. They were just issued an eviction. And for me, I guess the uh, the capitalist in me, it's, I don't wanna handcuff that mom-and-pop property owner that has been, oh, I'm handing this to my tenant, they've been here for ten years, I love them, I didn't, I never wanted to raise the rents, but jeez, now I'm gonna handcuff myself, so I gotta get it back to market before this uh AB fourteen eighty-two goes into place. Um I don't wanna handcuff them, so looking at what's in front of us, uh I I am not a fan of people being evicted and being put out of their homes over the holidays in a, in a time where there's not a lot of quality available rentals. Um and this is someone's home, right, this is where they're raising their kids, this is where they they lay their head at night. Uh but I do not want to handcuff landlords in a sense of, well, if there's currently no limit on rent increase, if they wanna raise the rent to market value and the person who's in place decides that they want to stay, then I think us as a dais, a policymaking dais, we've protected the mom-and-pop and we haven't really infringed on property owners' rights. But what we've also done is tried to protect that tenant that's in place. You know, because that tenant that's in place that has enjoyed low rents for many, many years. Uh I I feel for, I feel for your situation when your rent is being increased, but there's always two sides to the coin. You know, I also feel for that property owner that essentially if they do nothing with the rents and now their rental increases are capped, if you're thirty percent below market and that market continues to climb, it's gonna take a long time for them to get back to market. And their property value is essentially affected.
But i- is it possible, is it, it's too, it would be too late for a landlord to do that, right? That the soonest they could raise the rent would be January first, in which case they couldn't raise, they they would already be capped. It's it's almost, I know we have concerns about about trying to 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 put toothpaste back in the bottle on evictions, but by the same token, a landlord, if he wanted to to go to market right now and 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 have a rentor make a decision, the soonest he could do it for most people would be January first, in which case, I mean, he.
Is that right?
He couldn't be like, oh, you've gotta, you've gotta pay me new rent by December thirtieth.
Generally have to give notice of a rent increase with uh thirty days. I can't answer that with certainty if you put it, because you're, you're actually taking the act before the law becomes effective, so there are a couple of issues like that, I see that, for exa- example, and and Mr. Cadman raised it now, is could you actually start the eviction process today, knowing that by the time the thirty days is up, you'll be into the new law? And those will raise questions for courts to decide.
Can we, can we, can we grab, I I don't want this to turn into a a aerobics exercise for Mr. Cadman, but I mean, if if if, to to Scott's point, if I'm a landlord and I say to, on, effective today, your rent is now fifteen thousand dollars a month.
No, you can't. No, AB fourteen eighty-two is already placed the first maximum rent. It is eight-point-three percent, five plus, five percent plus a three-point-three percent CPI. And that dollar amount is based on what your rent was on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. So we are already capped. So there are tenants that uh, so so as of January one, your rent cannot be more than eight-point-three percent of what your rent was on March fifteenth, two thousand.
But can I send you a letter, can I send, if I'm a landlord and I send you and you're my rentor, can I send you a note that says, before January first, your effective rent is now this much through the month of December?
No.
I can't do that.
Well, actually, actually, you do, you do bring an interesting point. So in Long Beach, many of our rents went up by greater than eight-point-three percent. And what we have to do is we have to roll those rents back on January one to eight-point-three percent. So, but you don't have to give the money back to the tenants, that, the rent that you collected in September, October, November.
And that's a circumstance we heard on on Tuesday, right? That was Mr. Chansky's.
My point is there, there might be some challenges to that. I mean, that's, that's what it says and and how that, whether you can retroactively affect someone's financial interests, I suspect there'll be some battles over that.
But but the answer is that if you were to give me as your tenant a notice that my rent on January first, let's just say that it's November thirtieth right now, my rent is greater than eight-point-three percent, I would just kind of laugh and say, try and collect it from me. It's it's not possible, eight, fourteen eighty-two says eight-point-three percent based on what my rent was March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So I think to 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 Scott's point, that a bit kneecaps our ability to sort of let the market play this out, because we just, we we have is a regulatory and legal intervention in the market.
So I think then that limits our conversation up here, right, we can really hone this discussion to the no-fault evictions.
But can we look at the ordinance that Mr. Hensley put in front of us, because it's, it's good and it is addressing the evictions without just cause? So do you wanna just give us a quick overview, because I think we could probably agree that this might be the course of action?
It's a short walk.
This uh yeah, just to follow on that last conversation, which is that issue in the law that may be litigated as to whether you can retroactively limit some landlord's right to um raise rents above a certain amount um leads to the evictions, because then you don't have to have that legal argument. So it, you know, that's one of the issues is why there's evictions, is why do I wanna have that legal argument with this tenant? That I might, some court might say, I can't go more than this percentage retroactively. If I get rid of the tenant, I don't have to deal with that legal argument. Um as far as this ordinance, what this proposes to do, again, just prospectively, would prohibit evictions other than for just cause, which means, again, non-payment of rent, causing destruction to the unit, um being a nuisance, um as is defined in the law, to your neighbors, et cetera. So it's really protecting against, or it's allowing for those kind of evictions, but would allow for no other types of evictions before January one.
Thanks, Mark, I'd like to move approval.
There's no retroactivity in this, correct?
No. This will take four, it's the council, this is an urgency ordinance, so it takes four votes to pass.
Is there a second?
I'd, I have more discussions, sorry.
Okay.
I'll second it and then we can.
Okay, we'll call for a vote and then we can discuss if we need to, unless you wanna mention something else, Scott?
I'm sorry, I should be the title. Uh an ordinance of the city of El Segundo temporarily prohibiting evictions without, thank you, uh without just cause through December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen for residential real property built prior to January one, two thousand five, and declaring the urgency thereof.
When does it go into effect?
Scott has a question.
It would be today.
It goes in effect today. It's too late, thank you.
So is there still, now, we have open.
We can discuss or we can call for the vote, if you have something to say, say it, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But we can still discuss prior to voting? Okay, I just wanna, uh I, I'm in, I'm in support of this, but I believe it should be rolled back or tried to roll back, and to all the points that Mr. Henley's making, Hensley's making about whether or not that's enforceable, not enforceable. I guess the approach I wanna take, or my thought process on that is that if there are tenants within the city of El Segundo that want to go to blows with their landlords over whether or not us rolling this timeline back can be enforced or not enforced, I at least wanna give them the ability to fight, because this is, this is their fight, not necessarily our fight. And I feel if we do not roll it back and do any retroactivity on this, that those who are affected, like, we're we're really helping no one. And so that's, so I.
Let's hear from Mark again, can you reiterate the the inherent risk in taking that approach legally?
I don't think it'll ultimately be found for uh to be enforceable if it reaches um a court of appeal or or that level. So.
Is there any risk to us as a municipality?
We can always get sued, landlords can come in and sue, I I mean, do I think we would ultimately lose on a lo- on a lawsuit? Probably not, again, we're in some pretty uncharted area about how quickly things are moving on state legislation and us enacting things to protect against that. I I've seen stranger lawsuits against cities, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I mean, the way this has been worded is so that it's only a defense against an unlawful detainer action. It's not a criminal violation, this is not worded such that the city would have enforcement rights to go after someone, that's not the point. This would be something that a tenant could raise in an unlawful detainer action against their landlord. So it's, it's written to really try to attempt to keep the city out of the fray.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the city attorney indicated earlier, we've had an interesting dialogue on this over extended period of time, and I think what you're hearing from your city attorney is there's potential legal risk and exposure. However, I I would tell you from a policy standpoint, it's 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 your call if you wanna do retroactivity, and given what I've learned on this issue, I I think it would be um a risk worth taking, given the um the impacts on these human beings, so from a financial, public policy perspective, I would be willing to advise you to take that risk, but I'm not a lawyer.
Mark, is there a date going, if you're going retroactively, at what point do you go and, I mean, is there less risk in one date versus another?
No, I don't, I don't think so, I mean, I I.
The others have done thirty or sixty days?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to pick how far back you wanna go now. Yeah, that's, that's a policy call as far as how far back you'd wanna go. And I I don't know, probably just from a practical point of view, people that were given notices more than ninety or a hundred and twenty days ago have probably already been evicted. People started to learn of this back in, and I know I first learned of, although most of the focus was on the the rate increase cap, not on the eviction process. But this started to get a fair amount of coverage back in June or July. And landlords, you know, may have started as far back as then. The unlawful detainer process currently in the court system takes three to four months to get to hearing generally, so there's the potential that people that were served with notices five or six months ago could still be in process. Um as far as getting evicted, those those trial, those court dates may not have happened yet. So you could be protecting people in theory as far back as perhaps the middle of the year.
All right, I'm gonna ask Neil to come up, but before I do, Mayor Protem, you wanted to say something, I think, right? Oh, okay, great, Neil, do you mind one more time, sorry? Can't guarantee it won't be the last. Do you have a, an opinion on what date would make sense for us or what you've seen other cities do?
Well, I I, if I could ask a question first, so so the issue of retroactive is confusing to me, because my understanding from West Hollywood's law that that they just adopted uh a short time ago is that anybody who is currently under a notice to quit, a thirty or sixty-day notice to quit, this, their action would stay those unlawful detainers. So the issue of retroactive is confusing to me, because if any of these people are under a sixty-day notice right now, they have not had their court date, then the intent of those cities taking that action was that that would stop those unlawful detainers, or at least it wouldn't stop the unlawful detainer, but the tenant would go to court and say, your honor, I live in West Hollywood, they have stopped just cause eviction.
So there's no point, really, in the retroactivity?
No, because the retroactivity seems to me like you may be undoing an unlawful detainer trial that's already ended and a tenancy is already stopped. That seems, at least that's the way that I take retroactive.
I mean, we're getting lost in the verbiage, so the the, if we wanted a retroactive intent, what we really would be doing is we would like to stay active unlawful detainers, not reaching back in time on a date, but taking a current action on an unlawful detainer proceeding.
Uh, yeah.
And we're talking about a retroactive effect, but not a retroactive policy.
I didn't look at particularly West Hollywood, I did look at Hermosa Beach, and our approach is what I've proposed is pretty much almost identical to that, some different changes, but not substantive. Um same as, same city attorney in West Hollywood is in um Hermosa Beach. Now, West Hollywood tends to be uh pretty aggressive on their approach to things, um but it's not a greatest.
Could it be a timing issue, maybe Hermosa Beach was earlier?
Here's why, I mean, in reaction to what Mr. Cadman said, so if anybody's still in an unlawful detainer process, in theory, um you could be in an unlawful detainer process for, um if you take it up to the court of appeal, it could go on for a year or longer, so we could be protecting people that weren't even impacted as a result of this legislation by doing a definition of anybody that's currently in an unlawful detainer process. That's probably much longer than you would, the my problem with, or my concern about defining as anyone that's. That's probably much longer than you would, my problem with, or my concern about defining as anyone that's currently in the process is that could reach back again to people that are in process for no reason based upon this legislation.
Very good point. I, I didn't, I didn't realize, if, if I may, I didn't realize that because you now have jury trials in California for unlawful detainers as well. If, if either party, uh, suggest, or wishes a jury trial and downtown Superior Court, you ask for a jury trial, you're now fourteen months out. So, um, so I haven't seen that, but it might be interesting to see that, what, fourteen eighty, fourteen eighty-two was adopted October ninth? October eleventh, something like that?
That's when the governor, approximately signed it, was that week, um, now-
It was passed by the assembly in September.
Right, about thirty days before that, but it really, again, had a lot of attention back in the summer. And landlords started doing things, um, back at that time because I think the expectation was, is happened with a lot of the housing related bills. Not all of them was, they got passed, they got signed, and they got put in place. And there was a pretty good, um, a very strong statement out of Sacramento that that was what was going to happen. And it essentially did. There were a couple of bills that didn't make it. So I think that the business people out there started taking action in the summertime.
So we could make a substitute motion to put what Mark Hensley has proposed as an ordinance into effect as of the date in which the governor signed the law into effect.
That's the motion I'd like to make.
Okay. So I think, Scott, why don't you make that motion then?
Can, can I, this is a, a, a similar but, but different take on it.
I don't think we have to vote on the other one. We can do a substitute motion without voting on the other, yes, Scott?
I mean, I just have, I have, as you probably sense from this, a lot of broad-based concerns about intervening in the market in a way that, that breeds. I mean, some of these, we're hearing clear indications of substandard accommodations that clearly, you know, it's one of those, if, if you think the, the pool pump isn't running now, wait till the guy is saddled with thirty percent undermarket two years from now, and that pool pump is never running, and those cabs are never being redone, and that paint will get done once a decade, or, or probably only by some sort of legislative motion that says you have to replace the paint. So I, I have real concerns about an intervention, uh, that penalizes the property, the property owner. I would be, is there a possibility, there, there's, there's an element to the law as it takes effect that provides, as, as I kind of was, was leading to before, about that property owner being obligated to provide a month's rent or two months' rent or whichever to, to move people if they're going to take it. Some of these rent, some of these property owners are obviously realizing a windfall, whether they wanted to or not, right? And they, they do a, 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 a no-cause eviction, notice to quit, and now they're coming to market rates. And some of these realizing a substantial rent differential immediately. Rather than freezing the housing stock, would anyone be amenable to, instead of doing that, requiring those property owners, say, look, if it's a no-fault eviction after September first, then you have to provide this mechanism to, to provide someone a month's rent or, or a rent differential to help them get to a new place or provide a new place. It, it, in effect, uh, something to what Scott was saying with showing a rent increase, this in effect is giving them the market weight of that rent increase. Look, this is what a new market that costs, and here's, we will pay you this much money to achieve that. But it doesn't handicap that property and that property owner in the same manner.
Mark, is that enforceable or is that getting into a whole new version of rent control?
That's, well, what we're, what's been excluded from this, which is going to be in the state law, is this idea of no-fault evictions where, again, you're moving in family members, you're doing substantial renovations, there are a number of things. And you can do that if you meet the requirements, but you have to pay the month's rent. I'm not quite certain yet how that's all going to get administered by the state. And if that's all going to get administered by the court system, that's not going to work out well for anyone. So that part of it to me is unclear. And so if we adopt that kind of a provision, we could be putting ourselves in a position of having to administer that. And I, I've had time to think about that a bit, but not a lot of time to study exactly how that would come out or research that. Because it's, it puts in place these rules that someone's going to have to make a determination about, like, what's, and, and this is where, um, and again, the state may have, um, be in an area that they don't even understand how this is going to work out for them. But the cities that have these provisions about renovations, they are very, um, complex, very, um, they go on for pages. And what would be required, and, and even in those situations, most of the time you can't evict, depending on what you're doing. You can increase rents as a percentage of what you put back into the unit. So the state here with this idea that you can kick them out if you're doing substantial renovations, I'm sorry for the long-winded answer, but it concerns me that we're going to get drawn into, um, the middle of that dispute. And we don't really have administration to deal with that. We're not, we're not geared up for it.
So to, to summarize that, if we put in something that says, if you are, for, for all the provisions of AB forty-two, you, you are moving someone out of no fault and it's effectively just for this reset, and you have to pay them a month's rent, and the landlord doesn't do it, your concern is that we don't have ability to, or the administration, to look at that lease and say, you did not pay them this month's rent. I don't see a cancel check.
And that's where I'm not quite certain, because this is different than what I see in other cities, is how the state is going to deal with that issue. Because the cities generally deal with that issue. They start. Now, you can, any, any decision made by a government body can be appealed to the court system. But by then, there's usually an entire administrative record about how they got there. In this situation, it's just going to be a landlord versus tenant, potentially just in court. And they're already clogged up court system with judges determining what substantial renovation is or kicking it back to the jurisdiction to put it in place and say, you determine it and then come back to the court. This is going to be something that will be wrestled with. And so my concern is we'll be in the middle of that wrestling match. I'm not saying you can't do it, I just, it could become complicated. This is all complicated, but it could become more complicated.
Mr. Mitten, okay?
Just for clarity, based on the information that we've gathered from those cities that have done this with the retroactivity, a number of them have gone back to October eighth. That's the effective date of the ordinance. I mean, of the new state law, so that's one, um, option.
Scott, say that again, sorry.
A number of the cities that have done retroactivity have gone back to October eighth. That's when the law was signed in, or the bill was signed into law by the governor.
So if you had, if you're a property owner, you chose the opportunity as of November first to, um, ask people to leave, reset market rents. So then we're actually empowering those tenants that have been evicted to go back to the courts potentially and say, I was wrongfully evicted. They've already, they're already gone. So what's their remedy at that point?
Well, um, many of them, um, if you are fighting this, that means you, you haven't given up control over your unit. Because until a court issues an order, um, at the end of an unlawful detainer action, a tenant can sit in that unit and do, and do nothing until they're ordered out. And so if someone just started the process back in October, uh, at, by the time the notices are given out and the process is started, the earliest they're probably going to be in court, if everything goes smoothly, and I don't mean smoothly from one side or the other, just process-wise, it's probably sometime in April or May. And that's, again, assuming there's not-
What about for those that have left?
For those that are left, this would provide, the way it's written, this would not provide any remedy to them because it's just, they're gone. It's just a defense during an unlawful detainer action. If they're gone, they're gone.
So do we need to make a vote on the, or do you want to have a substitute?
Yeah, the substitute, well, the substitute motion didn't get a second, so we still have a motion on the floor with a second, which was the original, the ordinance as it was proposed.
So if we make a substitute and make it retroactive to, say, October eighth or September first?
That was, that was a substitute motion.
That was a substitute motion that I put on the floor.
I mean, to be clear, those motions go to a property owner and we, we are, the city is intervening to take money out of those people's pocket. Like they're, this is, this, the city is saying that you bought this for a hundred dollars in two thousand. You planned on selling it for five hundred dollars in two thousand twenty, but now you're going to sell it for a hundred and fifty dollars because the value is capped of your property.
So I, I agree and disagree with, uh, when you were, when you were talking and, and that theory and the concept is like, yes, I don't want to, I do not want to intervene into just capitalism. I don't want it. That's, that's its own monster. Leave it alone. But to Mr. Cadman's point that, like, this was not signed into law until October, and yet it states that, that eight point three percent increase is from what the rents were in April? Or sorry, in March? Right? Goes all the way back to March. And so the state, not us, the state went in and put their hand in those landlords' pockets. And, uh, conversation, or I, I think a statement that you made, uh, earlier in the week was the state essentially put a gun to the head of that owner, of that property owner and said, you either be a bad person and evict all your tenants or understand that you are chopping potential value, you know, off of your property. To that point, I, that's where I, I'm conflicted. Because I'm, I'm with you on that, 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 that individual, those individuals that own those properties that are now doing something that they don't want to do, but they feel they have to do, uh, that is an unforeseen consequence. It's, and, and I wish that we could set a policy that would not apply to those individuals and only those looking to, um, profit off of like the, the concept of turning a building, as Mr. Cadman described it. But I don't think we can set a policy that applies to some and not all.
I, I don't also see it as just turning a building. I mean, you used the word flipping earlier. I mean, again, I spoke to a woman who's revered in this community, who owns an apartment building that did not know that this was happening. So this is her reset opportunity. And she's got kids and grandkids.
I, I would say that this, that the vast majority, I would presuppose of, if you were a large property company, right? Then you likely have an attorney, you likely have all these things that are attuned to these sorts of policy decisions. And the vast majority, I would suspect, and again, this is, there's no, I don't have any quantitative, but I would suspect that they took action virtually immediately. And the people that we're talking about that are these eleventh-hour evictions are probably mom and pop. You know, I, I would suspect at least the plurality are people who are getting the, reading an email from, you know, their financial planner. And oh, by the way, you have this amount of time. And, and, you know, some of these are, are turned buildings that we talked about probably late, but these eleventh-hour sort of movements are probably by the least sophisticated portions of the landlord base, I would suspect. Because I would think an attuned, large business interest would have taken action virtually immediately. Because it would monitor these things. They'd be involved in associations. They would be receiving these sorts of, um, insights.
Yeah, I concur.
That individual that you spoke to, Mayor Boils, were they doing anything?
Undecided at this point. She was still like coming to grasp, but I think some people are realizing this by way of our dialogue and are not abreast of, I mean- I don't know, I, I struggle with rent control in general, and this is not about rent control because we didn't make that decision. I, I think it has great intentions, but does not generally work to serve the purpose that were intended by legislators. But, um, I tend to agree with Chris on this issue. I just, I think that we're trying to help some folks out in the community. We are definitely hamstringing people that own property and that had certain expectations about that property that have, those expectations have changed dramatically for those people in the last few months. I know we're all grasping, grappling, you know, grappling with this issue, which is why we've had the substitute motion. We came back for a special meeting. Uh, Dr. Brand, we haven't heard from you. I'd love to hear your, your take on this. We do. We have a motion with a second, which is to approve, so first one, which is Mark's, an ordinance of the city of El Segundo temporarily prohibiting evictions without just cause through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen for residential real property built prior to January one, twenty, two thousand five, and declaring the urgency thereof. So should we call for the vote?
Was there a vote taken on the substitute motion?
No, we didn't get a second.
Didn't get a second.
So. Right, urgency ordinance. Okay, so we're going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the ordinance as previously described?
As written.
As, yeah, and as I just read. Call them for the, all those in favor.
I, I'm going to say that, I'll say I'm in favor because I, I think we need to do something.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, all opposed?
No.
No?
No.
No. Well, I, I feel we do need to do something. I just, not sure if we-
Okay, so we can have further discussion. Doesn't mean we're done. So one, four. Okay, all right.
Even absent our ability to administer, because we do lots of things we don't have the ability to administer, right? We have one code enforcement person, which I beat up on. We have all kinds of codes that we don't enforce, right? We have a fortune teller ordinance that we don't have administration to because we don't have a palm reading expert to go look into that. We, we have, we have all sorts of things that we don't have the ability to administer. I would, I would take all of these definitions, if it fits all of the qualifications where we are prohibiting, essentially staying these unlawful detainers, I would take all of those and substitute in some sort of mechanism that says that property owner, if they're doing this, then they need to provide exactly the sort of mechanism of a month's rent or two months' rent, whatever the, the, our August body decides is fair. You know, I, I think that, that is something that in the, and this is at least best because it's such a terrible position to be in. It, it shields us from some of the unintended effects of intervening into the market, right? And, and hamstringing property owners. Uh, and by the same token, provides some sort of palliative effect for people who are the, the ultimate victim of this. And it at least provides some sort of manner to, to go to market and have accommodation. I mean, if there are rental properties that are available, it sounds like we're seeing vacancies in the city, then market effects might bring some of those, at least some of those rents back to earth a bit. But by providing that sort of, of mechanism, even if we're stuck fourteen months from now and some he said, she said about whether someone wrote the check, you know, if we get, you know, obviously you want a hundred percent compliance. If we get ninety percent of client, compliance on forty units, it will, I mean, discuss, we're doing something. I just, I, I, the unintended consequences of intervening in the market are, are so vast. And it opens, I think, to the attorney's point, we could be opening up a can of worms of abuse where we have a, a, a tenant who should, is not the desired, not the desired target of our action from July or June. Who says, oh, oh, me too, you know, oh, oh, I also was just getting kicked out for AB forty. They said it was because I had nine sub-renters and twelve cats, but it's really because of fourteen eighty-two. So I would be, I guess, the short version is, I would be in favor of us enacting something that provides a mechanism for, to help the renters, uh, through a housing change as opposed to intervening and resetting a property value early. I think it's sort of least bad.
I like that, Chris. I like the remuneration aspect of that.
It's a middle, it's a middle ground.
Yeah.
But I, I think, it's something. It's doing something. You know, for us to just say, nope, sorry, figure it out, you know, it's the state's fault, I feel like that's not why people put their trust in us, to have us sit up here. So I don't think that we can come up with something in this moment, in this meeting. I think that's going to have to go back to staff. The staff's going to have to bring something to us, or do you think we have something?
I think we have so. I think, I was going to ask Mark if there was a, some factor of remuneration based on, like, three months' rent, two months' rent, what's the reason?
Put it on a cocktail napkin and we'll vote on it.
The state law is going to provide one month for what it considers to be these no-fault evictions. Well, that's what I was, I, I, not certain I'm capturing exactly what Councilmember Pimentel stated, but we could add into this, um, that it wouldn't just be for cause, if you will, that the no-fault, we could incorporate those sections from the state law, make them applicable now and allow people to evict for no-fault, um, as defined by the state law, so long as they meet the requirements of state law. That is, you'll have to pay the month, one-month eviction if you do a no-fault. Again, this probably, though, on a go-forward basis, isn't going to have a lot of applicability to people. But we could, we could add that, and well, that could be an additional protection for the- But we could, we could add that and, well, that could be an additional protection for the twenty-six days left.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, I have no illusions that this will be superseded on January first, but I mean, our concern is the people who, who sat there from October eighth until now, oh, you know, grasping at straws and yelling at the wind, I mean, that's.
But then if we put a specific date, then one of the things, to Chris's point, we don't want to, we want to make sure there's no undue consequences where we're actually, it's impacting people that were, uh, evicted because of other reasons other than the, the new law that are, had been sitting in a house, like, sitting in an apartment fighting it. So can we, should we put a specific definitive date as of this date?
So this gets back to the issue of the retroactivity and people that were, the process was started before today and so, to incorp, yes, you can do that, with all the provisos I've already made about retroactivity is, if you want to reach back in time to some date, whether that's October eighth, um, for, for those who have not left yet. Correct. Well, this again would only be, um, as a defense to an lawful detainer action. There's a, an eviction, a no fault eviction, if you will, and the tenant can raise, "Well, this was a no fault eviction, they were moving a family member in, they were doing renovations." And so, under the El Segundo ordinance, they needed to pay me a month's rent to be able to do that and so, you know, that, that's where it would kick in. For those who haven't left? For those that haven't left.
Can I move that?
Yeah. Why don't you restate it though, or Mark can?
Um, so, in section three, prohibition evictions, and this will just be prospective unless the council says otherwise, through December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, the owner of residential property shall not terminate a lawful tenancy without just cause or for no fault, and put no fault in quotations, as defined in Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-two, and so long as requirements for no fault, again, in quotations, evictions as set forth in AB fourteen eighty-two are complied with, and then it would go on, um, with the language about, um, this being used in a defensive mode against an unlawful detainer action.
For those who haven't left.
For those, well, that's.
For those that have left as of today's date.
Yeah.
Well, right.
That's implied though, isn't it?
Yes, well, because it's only effective as of today, if they're already gone, there's nothing for them to, to get.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the council, I'm just saying this, not to be difficult, but to be clear to the folks in the room and who may be watching, that, that, that's your intent.
Was that a question? Sorry.
No, I'm just saying that and hopefully our city attorney, we're on the same page, right?
I missed.
So basically, all we're doing is taking the way the laws are written as of January first and applying it to, back to October eighth?
No, not yet.
No.
You, that kind of failed.
No, he said prospective.
Prospective.
Prospective, but I'm just making the point that those who have not left their units, it will apply to them, but those who've moved out, no?
No, um, that was the discussion that, um, Mr. Cadman and I had. People may not, may, people may still be in their units from proceedings that were started twelve months ago, eighteen months ago. That, that's where it gets really dicey, trying to reach back and say it's going to apply to some time period because people could be there today that again, they're fighting with their landlord over nothing that has to do with AB fourteen eighty-two.
No, but I think what Scott was mentioning, Scott many, was mentioning is that if they've already vacated the building, this does not apply to them.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we would also want it, I, I would suspect, I'll use the royal "we" for it to say that, but these are people who have to have been served with an eviction after October eighth. So even if someone is squatting in a building and they were evicted in April and the sheriff just hasn't moved them out, that's not, that's not our target population. The target population is people who are served with a no cause eviction after October eighth and are in, currently in that apartment. We would want them to be furnished with one month's rent.
So if we, then on, on that section three, if, rather than say through December thirty-one, if the language from October eighth through December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, if that from October eighth is inserted, then that would accomplish what you just stated.
I think we need to restate the motion because we clarified it, refined it a little bit.
Okay, so that would make it somewhat retroactive to, um, that these rules would apply to actions taken since October eighth by a landlord. Um, if they were, if those actions were taken prior to that date by a landlord, this would not apply. But if they were taken by a landlord from that date, then it would be applicable.
Yeah, that, that's what I was driving.
Okay, is that a motion, Chris?
I would, I would, I would move that with those stipulations.
I would second that. I will second that. All right, we're going to call for a vote unless there's any other council comment? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I think it's four one. Mark, you're clear on what, yes, thank you, sir. All right, we are going into closed session. Thank you all for your participation.